Okay, welcome everybody for being here to tonight's work session and agenda meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. The first item on the agenda will be a discussion of the FY 2021 recreational trails program grant. Mayor Sullivan?
Yes, thank you. So, we are applying for a, with council's permission, applying for a grant for the, through a DECA for the Triangle property. And I apologize for this not being more timely. I know it's on the agenda and on the work session. As y'all know, these grants come around once a year and we're able to apply for them. So, instead of kind of kicking the can down the road and continuing to put these things off, we want to go ahead and apply for this money. But we have had a collective meeting of city staff, Councilman Martin was there, Councilman Brown was there, to talk about the Triangle property, also some other community folks, just to talk about kind of a vision for that property, where we are, and kind of come up with a plan. So, we've done that. We have got to put together a timeline on how we want to move forward. But this is going to be one step in that process, which is applying for grants for those trails, for our trailhead, for restrooms, for some signage. And again, this money does become available every year, but we felt like this was timely for us to do this as we continue to work through the development of the Triangle property.
Counsel, do you have any comments? Mayor, I have one question, just to kind of get everybody's thoughts going here, is that we need to finalize whether or not we're going to put this in a conservation easement or whether we're going to rezone it as a city park. And does that have any, maybe not have any bearing on that grant, but I think that we need to, once and for all, make a decision on that. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, and I agree. We need to, and we talked about that in the meeting, that we need to do that. It will not have any bearing on this grant, but we do need to decide how the council would like to move forward on that.
There were some other monies from some individuals. I think maybe a charitable organization that wanted to pay for the cost of putting it in a conservation easement. Is that money still on the table?
It is still on the table. They would also make contributions in other areas if we choose to move forward with a conservation or easement or something that would maintain that property as parklands, you know, for the life of it.
Counsel, I want to hear all of your thoughts on this, but I want to say that I am really in favor, first of all, I'm in favor of going after this grant because we can do an awful lot with it. Secondly, we do need to, I believe, preserve that land in perpetuity. I think that in 50 or 75 or 100 years, people will look back on that, just like they do our beachfront parks and Knoll Park and Henry George Park and the other great parks that single tax left to the city of Fairhope's people. So, I think that as we continue to grow as rapidly, rapidly as we're growing, we just need to do whatever we can to protect this green space from development.
I mean, I agree with you, Jack. I, I mean, parkland would protect, I mean, we have a case here in Fairhope that went all the way to the Supreme Court that proves that parkland will protect that land if we choose to make it parkland as well. So, I want people to do their due diligence on that. So, that's always an option as well. I just want that to be known. But as moving forwards, I think we can continue to move forward with this part of it and as we discuss or debate which way we're going to go with the details of keeping it green space.
How detailed do we need to be in applying for the DECA grant as far as we want bike trails on this park, walking trails over here, parking over here? I mean, does all that have to be determined upfront?
It does not. I mean, really what we're proposing right now is one multi-use trail. The trailhead, which would be the parking and the restroom facility and some signage is all we're proposing currently in the grant that we, that we're applying for right now. Richard, correct me if I'm wrong. Is that correct?
Yes, and you have to be sufficient enough in detail to justify the budget you're asking for. But understand, and just so you kind of know, on the document you're given, you see kind of what we call the boundary trail. That is literally cut and pasted right out of the feasibility study done by the International Mountain Bike Association. That was what they call Phase 1A of that north property. So, but reality is that if we get this grant and move forward with this project, that trail's not going to be exactly there, meaning that once the engineering and survey and you pick the obvious route that it goes. But the goal is to build 100, 1.5 mile boundary or perimeter trail that's multi-use, meaning that it's eight foot wide, has a all-weather surface, i.e. gravel or chert or crush and run, that will support walkers and bikers and joggers and things of that nature. And then that leaves the interior open, just like the Mountain Bike Association anticipated it then. Volunteer groups and other entities could work with council and the city to build interior trails that are specialized for mountain biking and other, other park-like activities. And again, we're asking for a bathroom, but it doesn't mean it's going to be right there with shown. That's where the dock that the International Mountain Bike people put, but ultimately you're going to pick the best location for grading and access and things of that nature. And I think the access would probably be off of Veterans. That seems to be the ideal place, but it may be further to the east or further to the west. That would be done in design. So, basically, think of these as lead design elements. And in this plan, the lead design elements are a multi-use trail, a trailhead that has parking, bathroom, and signage. And then we have suggested and asked for a sidewalk that goes from the trailhead down Veterans back to, towards town to connect with Eastern Shore Trail for those walkers or those that may be using our trail system to be able to access it. So, those are kind of the design elements of this. The exact location will be worked out in the design process when, if, if and when we get the grant.
Does this include the Robert Brown Memorial Tunnel?
The tunnel, as we call it, pedestrian tunnel, is definitely one of those elements in consideration because I think, you know, I think the big picture is, is that the Triangle and the north Triangle property need to be ultimately connected for usability and a, you know, something like they did at Timber Creek with the Gothic parts is a real ingenious way of solving a problem that's not terribly expensive. And I think there's an option for that one day. No, but it does not include it in the feasibility of this request.
Okay. It does look like the trailhead is put such a distance away to accommodate a future roundabout there, though.
Yes, sir.
That was good, too.
The other thing I will mention, as we met with the group that we were meeting with, there was a lot of conversation about the timeline of this project and things that have to happen on the front end. Obviously, we know the conservation easement or whatever we're going to do from that aspect is important. But the other thing is being able to log that property and remove some of the trees from the property and some burning. So, there's, there's a lot that has to be done to get to this point, and we know that. But again, this grant's not going to happen overnight, so we know this is the first step to, to starting to see, you know, some progress being made on that parcel of land.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you, somebody was going to look into the legal aspects of what else could be done other than the conservation easement, correct?
Yeah, and I think the conservation easement, what we talked about was it's all in the language that you use, and probably Marcus or, you know, an attorney can help us with that. But it's all in the language you use and how you, you know, how you word it.
I'm interested in seeing what you have, Councilman Martin, in regards to the park being used to protect it in perpetuity. You said there was a Supreme Court case?
Yeah, well, yes, a Supreme Court case went with the tax, single tax colony with the bluff right up here. And someone tried to build on it, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court, and they won. So, that was parkland, and they tried to do something other than parkland on it, and it won, to set a precedent.
What happens if a future city council wants to change it from parkland to business district?
Well, that's what we would have to talk about. And I'll tell you-
So, we got to protect ourselves from future government bodies?
Yeah, I, yes, I will speak to you about that.
Okay. Is everybody okay with the grant application? It was just too big of an item to put on the agenda and not discuss it in detail in a work session.
I have one question. Why is it 27% instead of 20%?
So, I just found out the answer to that question because I asked it myself, too.
Well, basically, it doesn't matter, I guess, because it's still 27% better.
Yes, but the cost estimate exceeds the cap on the grant, so it makes our portion 27%.
I just want to make sure if it does go to 20, we're not held because we voted for 150,000. We're held to that number because we voted on it tonight.
Right, Richard, you want to address it?
And I may get this completely wrong, and we got our grant specialist here, but as I understand it, and it may be better news than you think, the construction grant is 80, 20, up to 500,000, meaning the most on construction they'll do is 40, and we'll have to do 100,000. And they allocate 10% for engineering, is that correct? And they pay 100% of that?
Yeah.
So, actually, it's not, if, if we can keep engineering under 10%, then it's, it's only $100,000 for the whole, get the good with these numbers hold true. But I will go ahead and tell you, I've done enough projects to know that engineering is usually a little bit more than 10% of the total project. So, I think those numbers are probably, they're probably going to be about 27, 63 split on that, so.
We'll be looking for an engineering firm that's willing to do, to do that for, what, would that be, 50,000?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Ray will say 7%.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, that is on tonight's agenda. I believe that's item 12. It is item 12. Anything else on that, Mayor Sullivan? Okay. Not on tonight's work session, but something that we all need to discuss right away is I have a number of airport authority items that I need to brief you on. Councilman Martin will also help me. The good news, I don't know if you've seen it, it's not coming before us tonight because it's not quite ready, is that the city and the airport authority went out for a refunding of the latest bond issue, and it's not a typical bond, but a bank refinancing that we had done several years ago. Interest rates continued to decline to historic lows. We refinanced, Kim, what, about $6 million worth of debt? And we got a rate of 1.14%, if you can believe it. So, we are going to be bringing that before the council, maybe at the first meeting in March, I would think, probably no later than that. So, it's not tonight, so it'll be maybe in two weeks. And just ask for your support on that. We're already committed on the prior note. It doesn't, it doesn't change what we're doing. It's going to get the note paid off a lot quicker and maybe even at the same time, free up a little bit of money for the airport authority. The next item that we need to discuss is that we have someone who is willing to work with the airport authority to go after grants, looking at maybe some management of the airport. And we don't want to rush into this individual. We would like to have a kind of a trial and error term. So, Cory, I'm going to let you speak about the individual, but what Councilman Martin and I had envisioned, and we both talked to some key members of the airport authority about this thought, is to, you know, for every bit of money that the airport can start making on their own, they're less reliant on the city, but they, they needed still a little bit of help to get this going. So, our thoughts are if this gentleman can come in and bring in some new revenue streams, we can start reducing that dependency sooner. He wants to go after a $2.7 million grant that's due to be put in. The application is due in by the end of March. So, we have a little bit of a time crunch. You know, we're not asking him to work for free. But that, writing, are writing some grant applications for us in addition to some other tasks that the airport authority are still talking about, we were looking at maybe a six-month retainer at $2,500 per month. Cory?
Yeah, this particular individual, our airport has been on the city for a while now, and I just think that most cities do not have their airport on the backs of the city. They usually run on their own, and I think it's time for Fairhope to get to that situation. So, I was blessed by the good Lord to receive this young man who's been in the industry for over 20 years. He has his own business called URG Consulting, and he has delivered in bringing in funds to many different airports in his, in his tenure. So, be that as it may, I ask if he could help us to kind of gain some funds and become independent and hopefully in the future, help manage if we need that, if that be, if the board sees do fit for that. His name is Jason Wilson. The name of the company is URG Consulting LLC, and he is going after this 2.7 million to kind of get the airport in order on its own, running on its own off the city's back.
Let me, let me just give you just an idea of the return on the investment. If we enter into a six-month contract, that's all we're asking, at $2,500 a month, we will make a $21,000 investment. If we were successful in just getting this one grant, that one grant alone would, would more than likely, if used the way that we want to use it, would generate enough, what we can build with that would generate up to $300,000 to $400,000 a year in revenue. That one thing could possibly make the airport authority completely self-reliant. And there are some other things going on with the airport, some hangars that the airport authority is going to construct soon, which is going to give them some cash flow. There's several ground leases that are about to come on board that's going to give them more cash flow. So, they're right there at the cusp, but if we, we think if we inject a little bit of cash, the sooner they could start generating several hundred thousand dollars a year, the sooner we can stop giving them $320,000 a year. Even if we reduced it by 50,000 or $100,000 a year, we think this investment would pay for itself. Or potentially, it's, you know, it's not a sure thing, but it's not a big expense to, to give the gentleman a chance.
Right. So, are they going to ask the city for the funding to?
They're not asking for it so much as I offered it up to them. A lot of times I wear the city hat, and I'm, and I'm really tough with the airport authority, but in this case, I feel like being generous with them because I think, I don't think they have the money to set aside to pay this gentleman. I think that, you know, it's a, it's a small amount for the gain to the city, but it would be a very large amount to the airport authority.
Well, I mean, I think we're, I think most of us are in favor of the airport becoming more self-reliant, so I would certainly support that. As far as the 2.7, you may not be able to get into the details, but-
Yeah, the 2.7 I think that he's going after is the EDA.
Okay, so, is there any match? Is there any, is there any stipulation what it can be used for? Are you talking about building hangars and building-
Well, that's not, this not, would not be for hangars. This would be for some public safety buildings, which could also be utilized as an FBO on the east side and potentially building another fuel farm on the east side. As you all know, the amount of revenue that we're generating at the Fairhope docks from fuel cells there will, you know, multiply that by, you know, a factor of 10 or 20. And, you know, because airplanes burn hundreds and thousands of gallons of fuel, and, you know, we wouldn't, we didn't, we don't have to change the cost to the aviators, but we would just, one thing, we would be in the business of making some money off the fuel other than a seven cent fee that we get for every gallon that's sold. Now, that number would go up considerably.
And then, and then the public can also see how the airport is being used. It could become a command center for, for the fire, our local police, and state troopers, and the sheriff's office. They will have a command center and emergency area that we can come to if we have a disaster or catastrophe. And now the public can see where we get some use out of that and where the money is going. And we don't have that as we speak right now. So, it's all for the good.
So, Ms. Creech, I'd like to spring this on you, but Councilman Martin and I have been looking at some of the monies that the airport authority sought in relief with, with the CARES Act. And we, we want to look at that a little closer and make sure that we're not leaving a lot of money, and I mean an awful lot of money, on the table. We might need some help with that. I believe that they had requested $23,000, and there was a clause in there that said that you could look for debt payments. Debt payments, not $23,000 a year for that airport. So, if you can help us look into that. Anything else, Councilman Martin? Can I get just a kind of a straw poll, you know, from the council as to whether or not they would support that if we were to put that on the March 8th agenda? We'll, we'll try to get you some more details as to what that contract would look like. It's not just grant writing. There'd be, you know, other tasks involved with this individual taking on more responsibilities.
I think it's just $2,500 a month, I mean, that's probably what it was going to be.
Right.
Are we in a problem?
Okay. Robert? All right. Lisa, if you'll remind me, we will need to get some more details to you, though.
Yes, sir.
I think that was it for the airport authority. Committee updates?
Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board made some appointments. You'll see it on the agenda, where they renewed some appointments with Glover and Ms. Renee, I believe, Ms. Norman. And then they added a new member because we lost a member by the name of Jennifer Fauch. But they've been very much involved in the Triangle and, but besides that, I have no other. The Recreation Board, I think Jack was there with me. We met, and we just want to continue to have communications and talk with the public board, school board as far as a better relationship as far as our public facilities are concerned. That's all I have.
Councilman Conyers?
Library Board met, met earlier this month, and, and, you know, they had to, they had to get their budget passed early so that they would be able to apply for some state funding. And when they, when we passed their budget, we, of course, we did a reduction in, in funding just because we were not sure what to anticipate. But we also, for city employees, passed a 2% pay raise, and they reached out to me to see if we felt that's something we could add to the, add to the budget, do sort of a one-off. It equate to about $15,000 additional funding for the library this year. And I told them I would certainly run it by council. So, if people are comfortable with that, I may, I may get with Tamara and present that to Lisa to get some numbers for next month.
Counsel?
Who, I did.
What was that? Councilman Martin?
Come on, Jimmy.
Yeah.
About $15,000.
$15,000 or so for the library.
What is it for again?
For the library, for salary increases.
For salary increases.
Where does that put our budget back on then?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
We had to reduce that budget.
We'd reduced it about 5%, I think.
What was that, about?
That would have been about 40,000 or 50,000 reduction.
And this adds $15,000?
And we're putting a chiller in there, right? Yeah. Yeah, I don't, you, I have, you've looked at all the, everything, I mean-
I haven't.
As far as where they are now and what the-
I had, I just know ballpark where they were, and they had reached out and asked about, about that. If they had, if they had waited, they would have included that. I think if they needed, the city was going to, going to do that, but.
What's their staffing been with the COVID, Corona?
Um, I'm not sure. Let me see if I've got, I know they've been, it's been operational, let's see. I don't have the specifics on the, on the staffing numbers, but I can find that out. Tamara?
Probably some more.
But she did say that the, a dollar amount was approximately $15,000 to the current budget.
How long again has it been since they've had a raise?
That's what I'm asking.
Probably, last time the city did one-
Oh, a year ago?
I think they probably did one, but I can, I can clarify that, too. Library is sort of unusual in that it's, it's independent, but it's, but it's not independent. I mean, they operate independently, but they're very much dependent on the city for funding.
Does all the fringe have to be calculated on top of the raises?
I don't have a good question.
Jill, can you answer that? If we, if we give the library employees raises, do we have to calculate additional fringe costs? Or?
Well, they just ask them for $15,000 to give their employees a 2% raise, because they're, they would be off the city payroll.
We don't provide any other benefits? Okay.
Yeah.
What do we give up? Do we reduce it? I'm kind of trying, I don't, I'm trying to-
We reduced it by about 40,000 to 50,000 from last year, because we, we just didn't want to make a commitment not knowing what 2021's going to entail, and they had to have an answer right then. And it was, felt like, well, if you got to have an answer, we got to reduce it. If we're going to commit to anything, we can commit to 5% reduction. But by doing that, they put that request in prior to the city budget coming out, which included 2% raise for employees. So, they were discussing doing the same.
But if we give them that raise, then they have to probably put some fringe on top of their costs, so they're going to, they're going to net even less. Right? I'm not saying don't do it because of it. I'm saying that we got to be mindful of that.
But, so, that being a separate organization, it is a component of the city because of the, the dollar amount that we support them. But as being a separate organization, those are their employees. I know during the budget process, we did look at their financials. They do have a bank account that has a sizable amount of money. And, I mean, if it was a separate fund of the city and, and they were city employees, they would be treated, what they're, treated like the way they're asking for. But if they had a fund, a cash balance over there, we wouldn't be adding money to that balance.
Well, I can certainly go back to them and just recommend they fund it from there if that's, if that's the direction y'all want.
Is that cash balance still growing?
Yeah.
We had this discussion last year during the budget time.
Right.
We can, I can compare budgets to budgets to budgets that we have and, and look at what their cash balances have been at the end of, you know, at 9:30, you know, and look at 18, 19, 20, you know, to show a trend.
Well, the reason I ask that as well is if their cash reserves are growing, it might be justifiable that they pay it because, you know, if we pay it, that becomes a permanent item in the budget. That's not a $15,000, that's a $15,000-
Yearly.
Forever.
Yeah, yearly, yeah. Do they have their own accounting, or are you, are we doing their bank?
They, they do their own. They do their own. We send them their appropriation. They reconcile their bank accounts at year-end. Our auditors get with them. They give them all their financial data and then compile that data to add to our financials. And it's the same way the airport is done. Airport has their own treasurer. They put their own financials, and then at the year-end, their financials are given to our auditors, and it's, and it's that, on the last part of our audit, you'll find the airport and the library as a component unit. And it's just a component unit because of the dollar amount that the support, dollar support that the city gives.
And Jimmy, one area that I would ask them to look at, as I know, looking at our budget this year, as compared to, to previous years, because of COVID, I mean, the library was closed quite a bit, just as other city buildings were. So, there were some cost savings associated with that, whether it be supplies, or operations, or no travel. So, it may be where if they carried money over from last year, you know, they're able to utilize some of that to, to help offset some of those costs.
All right.
So, where are we then?
Sounds like I'm going to go back to Tamara and talk to her about their ability to cover that internally.
And I'll just say, working on the budget, I know that when it was first talked about with the library, that we were going to, you know, we were going to try to cut maybe 5% across the board. And I do feel like we were very conservative with our budget this year with our departments, you know, make it, really prioritizing things and making sure that, you know, we cut where it needed to be cut. So, you know, I'm hoping that they, they would do the same thing, which I'm sure they would. But I would ask them to look, see if there was any cost savings from last year from the days that they were closed and be able to utilize that, that money. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, would remind everyone that the revenue projections were lower than- Yeah, I would, would remind everyone that the revenue projections were lower this year than they were, not, not maybe by 5%, but by about 3%. But typically, it grows, it's, it grows every year, so if you take what the average growth has been, and you, and you take the fact that we reduced it about 3%, it's, it's probably about an 8% reduction, I would say, 8% or 9% reduction in what our typical revenue projections would be. So, which is in keeping with what we asked the library to do. Anybody? Robert, Kevin, I'll just wait for some more information.
I'd like to see more of the figures before, how much money they have to what they can do internally.
Councilman Brown, any committee reports?
No report.
Councilman Boone?
Yeah, the Harbor Board met last week, and we are looking for one more member. And anybody that would like to join the Harbor Board is free to turn in an application to the city and be looked at. We'd love to have you. And that's it.
I think that I've covered the Airport Authority business. We had the one meeting last week, and we will get some more information to everybody for the meeting on March the 8th. Department head updates, I understand we have a new employee you'd like to introduce, Mayor?
We do. Our new HR Director, Travis Cunningham, started today, and I just wanted to introduce him to the council.
You gotta stand up.
So Travis.
Do you have a report to give us, Travis?
I do not.
He, he comes to us from Virginia, he was, from this area originally, and him and his wife moved to Virginia, and they're back, they have a four-year-old daughter, and we're just glad to add him to our team. Thank you.
God bless you. Welcome. Okay. Ms. Creach? Ms. Walker? Okay. Chief Ellis? Chief Hollinghead? Page?
I just want to say, we had a great Arbor Day dinner on Saturday, we gave away 900 seedlings in 45 minutes, Richard and I were up there, and we could not believe it, and I'm sorry, they had come through there. So we may be looking to change the format, I don't know if anybody wants any trees during Sally, or.
I want to get out.
I received a message from Councilman Conyers that they were out before I left the house to get here. And I thought I was gonna be a little, you know, right, kind of in the middle of it.
I got there about, what, 9:46?
Did you get a sapling? Did you get a tree?
No, I missed about about a minute.
Did you get Charlie Brown?
No.
Okay. Wow, okay. Mr. Allison? Jason? Wow. Who am I missing? Eric?
Taylor is also, oh, his, well, his father passed away, so Taylor's not able to.
Sorry to hear that.
Okay.
Sorry to hear that, man. Did we send him something?
Eric, nothing? A miracle? Richard?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things, just kind of update you on public works projects going on in, in the community. Our road paving, weather has been a factor, but they're back today, they're working on Kirkman Alley portion today, and, and hopefully we'll get the rest of that knocked out. The Church Street project has definitely been affected by weather, but they're, they're planning to be fully remobilized tomorrow and moving forward. Kim and I, and, and the rest of the team, the FEMA PA, we are, we are gutting through it from Sally, and, and sometimes you forget between storms just how much bureaucratic work it is to, to, to check all the boxes, but, and, and Kim did have a victory today, we actually got a big reimbursement check from Hurricane Nate, which happened in October of 2017, not to scare you guys, so. So, you know, it's one of those things, is that patience and persistence is rewarded with FEMA. Just to follow up, the speed limit should have been lowered on Twin Beach today, those will have signs with flags on it, the other elements that y'all approved have been addressed as well. And probably on a, kind of a bigger note, as you know, we, we received a MPO project for Gaffa Road Turn Lanes. We are scheduled for what's called a PSNE meeting, that's kind of the final design review by Aldot on that, so that's moving forward. And the Atrip 2 project, which is the turn lanes at Twin Beach and Greeno Road, we are scheduled for a March letting with Aldot, and these are my favorite kind of projects because we are, our part is done, meaning that Aldot bids the project, they open it, they award the contracts, they make all the payments. If you'll remember, our responsibility in that project was to take care of the upfront engineering cost as well as any utility relocates. We got really lucky, we didn't have to relocate a single utility, so we didn't have any costs there. So what does that mean? Aldot will let it in March, they take about 45 days to get a contract in, in place, so we think that we'll have a pre-construction somewhere in probably late April, early May, with the goal that construction starts when school has let out, which is the best time to do that work. And hopefully substantial construction is pretty much completed before school lets back in there in August, so we're excited about that. And on Arts Alley, which we have to talk about every now and then, we did get our funding eligibility letter, we're still trying to interpret certain parts of it, and we're working on that, but, but we are closer than we were. And I, I do have a grievance that I want to bring up to you, if, if you didn't know, about a year, three months ago, they filmed a movie here called The Map of Tiny Perfect Things, and one of the locations that you approved filming was at the Public Works Public Utility Compound. And we kind of got excited, and they asked if they could use our equipment as backdrops, and we made sure we washed every garbage truck, our excavator was shining, and they stayed out there for a day filming. I spent my Sunday afternoon watching that movie, and we got three seconds in that movie of our beautiful equipment, and I'm upset about that. I just wanted to make it on the record that we deserved better coverage, but I will tell you, in that movie, our city did look fantastic, so, but our equipment was beautiful, and it was underserved in that movie, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit taken back by it, so that's all.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The lights at the crossing, are we, are we still working on that, or?
We are.
I hit, hit a couple the other night.
Okay. And, and I will tell you, and, and I, I was hoping, and, and we're still waiting on an actual date, date, we got, we, we do have a gold-plated warranty on that, the vendor has acknowledged that that system is not up to their par, they have a different manufacturer, they're going to replace both of those systems at no cost to us, and they have been working with the contractor who did the original work, and it looks like that's going to occur in March. And part of their amends is that they have at least said, would you be willing, if, if you're happy with this system, we will offer you another system at half price, just to make amends for that one not working as it was advertised. So we're gonna get it done, and we did have a citizen hit one of the pedestals, and that was covered by insurance, and we've gotten that settled as well. So we're, we're, they're going to get fixed, and, and they, we still have a five-year warranty that will start again when the new system gets put in. And it's just the components being replaced.
All right.
Thank you.
I did see a lady. I'm gonna go slower. I did see a lady yesterday afternoon pushing that button on that pole waiting across that street, I stopped, told her it didn't work. Mr. Johnson, while you're at the podium, Lisa, did you or Marcus have any report to give?
No, I did not.
Okay. While I got you there, this is kind of, we're gonna go into the agenda meeting if we can. A lot, and I'll just, for the general public, there's just a lot of budgeted items on here, things we were waiting for the budget to pass before we put them on the agenda. A lot of community development expenditures that are, are on here every year, so the agenda is very, very long, but we'll go through it, much to the chagrin of the gentleman that was at the last meeting, we'll probably go through a lot of these very quickly tonight. But one item that jumps out, that, Richard, I'd like for you, and maybe in conjunction with the mayor to address, because I think it's been on everybody's radar, is item number 25. That is reject the bids for municipal pier utility tray repairs, and to rebid. Some background, I know you've probably all received texts and emails and phone calls about the pier not having electricity, water, and sewer. So can you just address that, Richard?
Yes, sir, and, and as you know, our, our pier did very well during Sally, but the, the little follow-up hurricane that occurred in October, Zeta, basically took the, the principal primary utility services that run from the seawall at the pier landing out to that midpoint with the bathroom restaurants, literally stripped them off of the, the utility chase that was suspended off of, of the north side of the pier. So as a, as a quick response to try to get a way to get those utilities back on, we took the original drawings and specifications that were done on behalf of the city after Hurricane Cortina, when that, that, Catina, and, Katrina, thank you. And that work was done circa 2006. And just so you know, that, that wire chase and the utility chase had a composite lower strut that, that was suspended by threaded rods and everything else, and we had a recommendation, that was the failure point, the threaded rods were still there, the washers were still there, the nuts were still there, but the, the lower strut. So we, we upgraded that to a stainless steel and put it out to bid, but put it back together just like it was. We ended up only getting one responded, and it was, it was, it was expensive, as you can see, I think it was $237,000. And we just felt like that that was, that was way too expensive, especially when you consider that's about 475 linear feet, and, and we, our utilities, were gonna come pull the primary and do all that, that was just re-establishing the conduits and everything else to, to support the utilities at both ends. So as a housekeeping, we did open a bid, and then we didn't do anything with it, because we said, there's no way we're going back to the, to the drawing board. So by legal process, you guys have got to reject that bid, we just can't completely ignore it and not do with it, so that's why it's back on. We, we worked with all of our utilities, we got some, some outside consultant, some, some, some help, and we devised, hopefully, a more simplified methodology to replace and re-establish those, those utilities without having to work from a barge, but, by, by using the structure that is good out there and everything else. We opened that bid tomorrow at 10:00 AM, so we kind of got ahead of ourselves, but we still got to reject the bid that we just don't think is feasible.
Richard, what, some details on that design, and, and, you know, if that really expensive fancy support system for the, for the pipes and the conduit, if it failed due to, in Zeta, I mean, I, I just don't see any reason to spend a lot of money on that, and I know you said it's been simplified, to, to, to build something that's gonna fail again. I mean, and, and that wasn't, you know, Katrina, Katrina, you know, would have done a lot more damage, so.
Yes, sir.
I, I hope you've simplified it, there was a box in there that had all that conduit in there. Is that necessary to have? What, what was the purpose of the box when you've already got conduit, you know, which is protection for the wire? Maybe you just had a bare pipe with raw sewage in it, and you want to put in that box?
Well.
What was the, that seemed like an unnecessary expense to me.
Well, here's the challenge that we're trying to overcome, is we, as you know, there are cantilever stainless steel brackets that, that, that jut off to the north, and they're spaced every five feet. So you, you've got to span, and, and our, our simplified method is that if we set a, a wireway, a encasement on top of those brackets that can span that distance and carry that weight, that was the, that was the key thing, is you got to be able to span. And the, the other thing, and Mike and Jason talked about this, and the gas folks, is then we also have to control separation of primary electric distance-wise from gas, so, so having a, a basically a chase that you're putting things in that you can mount and everything else, you can, you can maintain those distances. And the other thing is, is, you know, you don't want to have a system that, that it would have to be very difficult for somebody to accidentally tamper with, and it's, it's kind of that, that encasement enclosing. And that was the thought process there. I mean, could we just lay things right there and, and let the stiffness of their conduits bridge it, possibly? But the other thing, and, and the mayor and I talked about this, is, is trying to maintain an aesthetic, that you don't want it to, to look not neat and organized and, and thought through and everything else. So that, that was the basis for that, that decision, is one, getting it out of the weather, having it protected from people that, you know, even though there's a rail there, you don't want somebody to, to be able to mess with something that would, could be detrimental if they did, and to have it be clean, neat, and, and maintainable. And by bringing all of that up, because as you remember, those brackets go off, off of, off the deck, so now, the utilities now are at least at deck high and higher, because what happened is all the major utilities, the electric and sewer and water, were all hanging below the deck level, so when those waves came, there was nothing to break those waves, they were hitting that, that, that utilities that were hanging down and, and broke them all off, I mean, so we're hoping now, you know, I don't think we survive.
That was with the, with the rack system that was in place?
Yeah, because you remember, there was, if you go look, the threaded rod is still there, so they were dropping down almost two feet toward that lower strut, so they were hanging two feet below the deck level, and they were right in the breaking waves for that tropical event. This way, that chase, that wireway is set up on top, can span from bracket to bracket, and at least it has to break over the deck of the, of the pier before you get waves hitting that actual structure, and that was the thought behind it. And, and we have, you know, our recommendation is, is that in what we're bidding right now, we've already worked with the supplier of, of, of that wireway, we have some budgetary numbers, we already get the advantage of, of using a cooperative to purchase, and we don't pay sales tax, so we, we think that, that hopefully, we're gonna come back with a much more palatable cost tomorrow, hopefully. I mean, you know, just, I know we've had a lot of phone traffic, folks asking questions and things of that nature.
It's about that time of the year, people, we better back out to use that pier.
Yes, yes, sir. And it's critical, we don't have water or sewer at the bathrooms, so we don't have public restrooms, we don't have lighting along the pier for the public, and of course, subsidiary of that is we don't have the secondary services that are associated with, with the marina that's out there as well.
Item 28, wooden pier repairs damaged by Hurricane Sally, are those the wooden piers to the north of the main pier, or is that?
And that's an incorrect statement, those were damaged by Zeta, and those are the two piers at North Beach Park, the furthest one to the north, which is kind of odd, if you'll remember from Hurricane Nate, that's the one that received hardly zero damage, it was destroyed during Hurricane Zeta, and the one to the south, the southernmost of North Beach, just has the piles uplifted on the south side, and those have to be reset, and it also includes a reset of a couple of piles at the end of Pecan Avenue Pier, which are jutted up as well.
Do you have any other items on the agenda that you'd like to point out? I'm trying to go through the 50 items as fast as I can.
Very quickly, because we, we definitely want to make sure that you make an informed decision on the garbage ordinance, even though it's just a first read tonight, that, we, when we discussed, the only one that we talked about going up to 25, what we had labeled when we discussed this, HC, which actually stood for handicap, we offer a service that we really call residential backdoor, meaning that we do have 29 citizens right now that, that have legitimate reasons why it's difficult for them to roll their cart out to the curb, so our, our, our service providers will bring that cart out, service it to put it back to where it, it stays. Y'all recommended going up to 25 on that, it is a concierge service, greater than the normal service, but we thought with 29 people, and, and I think you see that our recommendation is 23, seems like a, a sweet spot there.
I don't, I don't think we did recommend going up on that.
Not on that one? Right?
Y'all did.
On that one, it's, well, I've done, I read differently.
Yeah.
But other than that, and that's for y'all to decide, if you want to keep it 20, 29 customers are not gonna make and break us in the big scheme of things, so, but, you know, it, it is a service we provide for those that, that, that have a need.
What item is that?
It's item, I'm, I'm trying to pull it up.
Number nine.
Item number nine, so I want to go ahead.
But I left it at 23, that's the recommendation.
Okay. I'm trying to find it on here, oh, you've got it called.
Backdoor service.
Backdoor service. So it's at 23?
That's our recommendation, it's a little, little nicer service than, than the curbside, but don't want to be punitive either and go all the way to 25.
So you put 23 on here, then?
Yes, sir.
Well, if we said 25, how'd 23 get on the ordinance? I told you 23, didn't I? Yeah. All right.
And everything else.
It's on, if you introduce it, it's correct on here.
That's, that's what I was.
Yep.
I read it correctly, that's what I was saying, yeah. I didn't see it go up, is what I was saying, yeah.
And we have a budgeted trash truck that's on there, as well as. And the good news is, I think y'all budgeted 45 for that, and we found a truck that will meet those needs, that is $30,000, so that's a good thing. And just so you know, the current sign truck is either a '97 or '98 model that is, needs an engine, so we, we, we don't need to spend that much money to fix a truck that's old.
Jimmy will buy it.
I think that was a good job. We said like $15,000.
That's just getting broken in for Jimmy.
Well, it'll be on government deals, you'll see it permanent mortgage, too, so. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just going through the agenda. Who is filling in for Hunter tonight?
Council President, can you hear me?
Oh, are you there?
I'm here, if you have any questions.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Are you going to make the presentations on six and seven tonight, the final adoption of the zoning ordinances?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Jeff, does he have a visual to go with that? Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you, Hunter.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chief, can we talk to you about item A, the towing and recovery ordinance that we need to? So, it's done. Does anybody have any questions for the chief now?
I spoke to Randy, I believe. Daniel, yes. That's what I thought. So, they were supposed to be here to kind of explain to the citizenship themselves, you know, why such an increase of 40%. And, but I don't know if he's here or not.
Okay. Well, it's still a little early.
Yeah.
You expect him to be here, chief?
I do.
Okay.
I want him to be here.
Right. Okay. Item nine, Richard's here to answer any questions about item nine. Item 10, rescinding the award. Jessica, is that you? Let's talk about that one for a few minutes.
He had him know, like the great and powerful eyes voice like Hunter. That was awesome. So, you guys awarded this back in December. This is the GIS portion of the Comp Plan Restore Act Award. We began the procurement process with ADCNR immediately after, and they recognized very quickly that we had made a clerical error in procurement of the award. So, this is, and the delay in getting this to you, I mean, they, they realized really quickly, the delay in getting this to you was my illness and also their opportunity to kind of go back to Treasury and figure out the best way for us to do this so that we do it correctly. Obviously, we're here today because we need to kind of rescind that award. We're going to go back and take care of the clerical error that we made, and we will have this back in front of you on the March 8th agenda to re-award this item.
Okay. That wasn't the other evaluations that we did recently? That, that wasn't?
So, the Comp Plan award has?
This was the part that's broken away from that?
Yeah, this is the GIS part. So, there are two, actually three parts to this. One is the program administration, which Stacy is here for. The second part is GIS, and the third part is planning services. And because of the award and when it came in and the timing, the GIS was done by the original evaluation team for Restore, for our Restore grants. So, this is going to kind of really correct some of the clerical things that make it a little bit complicated. Because as you know, halfway through this process, we did change what that makeup of that team looked like, so this will actually just help us all the way across. You have any questions?
Any questions, council? Okay. Travis, you're going to cover 11, HR-related consulting services. You ready for that? Yeah. I will make a joke or two up here, so.
Hit the ground right off.
Mayor, who, who could speak to that if we had questions about that? Would that be you?
I can, yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the HR consulting services? It's adding an additional $5,000 to the amount the mayor can spend on the HR-related consulting services. I don't think it has anything to do with the fact that we just hired you, Travis, this was, you know, other, other things.
I would like to add that she is?
She's an attorney, correct?
She is. She's an attorney, she's in HR, she specializes in HR, and she's just been a great resource for us. I know Lisa has had to visit with her several times during her interim status as HR director. So, we just realized we wanted to make sure we were doing, you know, the, doing it right, make sure we had the money to spend if we needed it, and be able to use her as a resource. So, that's why.
I was just going to say, she is a huge asset and, and great to work with.
Okay. Well, I just, I know that we were down a person, I didn't know if we, you know, with the hiring of an HR director, how, how necessary that was. But if it's an attorney, I know a lot of things, Travis, you may be an attorney, if you're an attorney, we can strike this, but, okay. All right. Item 12, we've talked about that in the work session already, that's the EDECA grant application. And who would we talk to? Would that be you, Mayor, if we have further questions? Okay. Were all passed in the budget. Those were community development funds. I'll probably go through those pretty quickly, unless you want to stop, stop me on that, and we'll figure out who we need to ask questions of. But this is, you know, maybe the sixth or eighth time you've seen that, and for those members of the council that have been here a while, you've seen them every year now since you've been on the council. Item 25 was the item that Mr. Johnson just discussed in detail concerning the repairs at the pier. Item 26, sludge removal services. Who would speak to that if we need to ask any questions about that? That'd be, Jason, would that be you? Basically, council, what you need to know is, it's $85 per yard, and I believe that's the same price that it was last year, correct? 27, the resolution approving the procurement for the Fly Creek tree removal. Mayor Sullivan, do you want to address that now? Yeah, please do. I think it's, it's, that's an important subject there.
And I'm going to ask Richard to jump in, too, because Richard did the most work on this. So, and Councilman Brown can also chime in if he would like to. We had several trees down as a result of Sally in the, in the Fly Creek waterway, and we have, I guess, talked about how to get those trees removed for some time now. We've had citizens reach out to us, and so Richard put together a great map of the trees down in Fly Creek and GPS coordinates, and we were trying to work through the state, because technically, the state is responsible for removing those. They did not have any funds to remove these either, remove the trees. So, we knew that this is something we were going to have to do, just like some of our neighboring communities, Orange Beach and Gulf Shores, has had to foot this expense as well. So, we worked, I actually ran into Commissioner Blankenship in, with Conservation in Montgomery, and talked to him about this, let him know that we had bid, that we had bid out this process, that we were putting it on our council agenda, and hopefully, at some point in the near future, we will be able to get reimbursement for this expense. He said they did not have the resources to remove the trees, they were having to bid out the work as well for different areas here in Baldwin County, Weeks Bay, Magnolia River, some of those areas. But since we had already done all the legwork, he let us continue the way we have, and he said on the back end, we will work it out as a grant or an MOU with the state to be able to get reimbursement on these funds.
How quickly do you think they'll be able to start if we, assuming we pass tonight?
Richard, he, Richard probably knows the answer to that question.
Luckily, being an amount below $50,000, we'll just do it through a purchase requisition process. So, we, and I, we've had a pretty tight timeline on there, so hopefully, if y'all approve it, and as soon as we get the resolution, we will, we will get the purchase requisition pushed through and put Tom's Meyer on notice to start there. And I think we had, I have to go back and look, but I think we had a, either a seven or 10-day notice proceed, meaning they have to start within that period of time that we give them that notice, and I think they had less than 14 days to complete all work. So, hopefully, sooner than later.
Thank you. Great question.
Okay. Item 28, Mr. Johnson also mentioned the wooden pier repairs. Since this was due to Hurricane Zeta, we haven't been declared a disaster area, so we're not going to get FEMA money for that, but can we, can we claim that on our insurance?
Yeah, but we don't, our insurance won't cover it.
They don't cover them? Okay.
But I do know that our EMA is still trying to get us prepared for Zeta, so we're not giving up on it.
Okay.
So, we followed all the rules, so if that happens, we can, we can.
Which means we could also claim the utility repairs on the main pier, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Items 29 through 38, and actually 39, I don't know how 39 ended up out of order, seemed like it would have gone, it doesn't really matter, but it could have been thrown in after 24. 39, 40, 39 and 40 are also community development items, but 29 through 38 are budgeted items. These were approved in the budget. This is just your second bite at the apple. Jimmy, I'm, I'm assuming you've already taken a close look at this in there?
Oh, yeah.
You're going to tell me whether it's above or below budget?
Yep.
On all of them? Richard's properly trained everybody to put in a big number, so it comes in under budget every year.
I have to brag on everybody, though, because all these items on here are $68,000 under budget. So, I really appreciate the staff being physically responsible, and also Tim Bong and the mechanic shop center, great job of looking at surplus, you know, from the state of Alabama, to make sure we can find those sign trucks and a dump truck and those kind of things. So, just, you know, kudos to the department heads for, for watching their budgets.
Actually, 35 is not a, necessarily a budgeted item. That was the procurement of the roof repair, so I'm, that was in the budget, but it's not a typical budget item. And then also 36, terminating the purchase order between the city of, Mr. McDowell, if we had questions, would we ask you about 36, the CDW agreement? So, we couldn't, we couldn't reach an agreement between the attorneys?
Correct. I'm just not, the IT consultant, is this the, I believe this was the article? We can ask, yes.
Okay. Jeff, you're, you're here in case we have questions, and also you, Marcus?
Correct.
Okay. Let's see, 39 and 40, like I said, those are community development items. Specifically, 39 and 40 are both in-kind donations, there's no money. 41 will be of interest. Mayor, we can ask you about the arts and crafts again? This is where they're requesting permission to reschedule and allow the use of the streets. The 42, I don't know that there'll be any questions on the permission to hold the Easter Sunrise service, but who would we ask? Would that be you, Jessica Page? Item 43 is a request from the ESRT. It's kind of wordy. Chief, in your estimate for that, there was, I believe, $1,600 for, I'm trying to find, I don't have number 43 on my tab, so I have to, to add 31 plus 12, I guess. Is that how you did it for me, Lisa? Okay. Nothing there. Struck out. 13. There was a $1,600, a $1,600 security cost. Did they pay that separately than how they pay the civic center? They pay y'all directly, right?
Right.
Okay. Because I want to remind everybody, when these organizations come to the city and they want security, we have an ordinance in place that prevents them from even asking to waive for this security. So, we want to make sure that, that's not something we can do in, in kind. We can do the barricades and give them use of the streets. They're getting 50% off the rack rate for the park because they're a nonprofit. Lisa, what am I forgetting on that? Oh, they've already paid, they paid last year, and so they're rolling over the money that was paid last year to this year. Just, basically, it's a change in dates. But I did want to put in there, when we said, when they said requesting permission to use the park, that they would be responsible for, for the security costs. We didn't want them to assume that if they pay the, the park rental rate, that that was in, included. Because those have been asked by everybody.
It's two separate entities.
Right. Well, they, most everybody that wants to have an event wants us to provide that, which is why we said no and made it an, an ordinance that you couldn't ask. Well, they can ask the staff, but the staff can't, can't bring it to us. Okay. Application for special retail liquor license, restaurant liquor license, appointments to the Environmental Advisory Board, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and then public participation and an executive session. Any questions? Anything we didn't cover? All right, let's adjourn and get in here, five minutes till six, so we can start this on time.
Absolutely.
Okay.